This meeting will now come to order. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by an annual notice, including the date, time, and place of this meeting, posted in the first floor main lobby of the Pittkin Education Center of Bergen Community College, was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News, and was filed with the clerk of the county of Bergen, January 2018. The roll call. Joseph A. Barretto.
Here.
Dorothy Blakesley. Gerard Carroll.
Here.
James Demetracus.
Here.
Patrick Fletcher.
Here.
Mark Longo.
Here.
Carol Otis.
Here.
Irene Ujo.
Here.
Chital Rangin.
Here.
Peter Zelakostas.
Here.
And Joseph Zahra is not with us this evening's absent. Please stand. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair?
Yes. I attended the 2018 Governance Leadership Institute. There were many exciting topics that were discussed, but a few topics I felt may be of interest to our college are change, the political landscape, financial challenges and constraints, declining enrollment, financial aid, completion and student success, and also technology. We also discussed some issues that directly affect the students, such as financial aid, too distressed to learn, return on investment, hungry and homeless, and the family-friendly campus imperative. One of the major concerns for community colleges throughout the nation is how to help students with children stay in school. I also attended the 12th Annual Black Brown and College Bound National Summit. Dr. Daniels arranged to have students from our college attend this conference. Mr. McKnight also attended and was one of the speakers at a session that I attended. Although I attended many other sessions, I also had the opportunity to interact with our students. Our students represented our school with class. I had some people come up to me expressing how professional our students were. I was very proud of them. There were many well-known speakers that delivered very valuable information at these sessions. This is one event that our students should continue to attend. I also attended the Guys and Dolls play here on campus. It was a great performance by the actors. It seemed that every play I have attended has been outstanding. I hope that everyone here will have the opportunity to attend one or more of them. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And we did attend Guys and Dolls the other day. Secretary.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to recommend the board minutes for March 6, 2018, and consent agenda dated today, April 10, 2018, for approval.
So moved to second.
Yeah, I would like to remove item, just making sure, P1A for discussion and executive session before we take a vote.
What is the procedure? Do we go into executive session to discuss?
At the end of, yeah.
At the end of the thing? Okay, good.
So we won't vote for that? You want to? Treasurer is absent tonight. President.
Thank you. You'll have to forgive me, my voice is a little rugged tonight, I'm getting over a cold. I see Jim Bumgarner's face just beaming back there with the reference about Guys and Dolls. I'm going on Friday night, Jim, so I'm looking forward to it. This is a really big month, this week and next week are big weeks here at the college. In fact, perhaps April 12, this Thursday, might be the biggest day of the year short of commencement. On Thursday, we have the Attorney General of New Jersey coming at 11:00. We have a legislative luncheon at 12:00. We have an expanded open house that goes from 3:00 to 7:00. I think we have all of the guidance counselors in the county coming on that day as well. And there will be, I think the play's going on too on Thursday night, I think there's a ballgame. It's going to be a really fantastic day, we just hope the weather holds out. And then, a week from Thursday, does anyone know? A week from Thursday, what happens?
Yes.
Everyone better know. It's the scholarship gala at the Venetian. We have, I think, Larry, how many tickets do we have? About 300 tickets sold. We still hope to get another 100 between now and next Thursday. I think that would be a record here for institution. We're looking forward to that event. Larry says he's got a few tickets held back, just in case some of you might not have gotten your ticket. We still have one just for you. I do hope that you'll come. One of the things I'd like to talk a little bit about, we have a short presentation. When I was appointed last, end of last June, one of the things the board said to me was that they thought, I agreed, that we needed to overhaul our technology system on campus, particularly in regards to how we go about having a virtual campus, our online services for registration, advising, financial aid, bursar's office, all those kinds of things. And so we've taken that very seriously. Part of that initiative is entering into a managed services agreement with Alucion, which has now started. I see some of the Alucion folk now, who are now BCC folk here on campus, glad to have you here this evening. But the other part is we started a crash effort to begin building this virtual campus and overhauling these systems. That crash effort started in September, and it encompasses, or will encompass eventually, 14 different self-service modules. Now, for the initial phase, we focused upon three particular modules. One that we call student planning, which has to do with registration and advising. There's one called financial services, which focuses upon the bursar's office, how students pay for their bills, receive their bills, that kind of thing. And the third one is financial aid. And I'm really happy to say that the deadline that I gave the group, which was April 1st, the beginning of registration for the fall and the summer sessions, we actually made that deadline. In fact, I think they were ready to go a week early. Now, some of the folk are going to tell you about this venture in just a moment, but for all the people, I see a number of people out there in the audience that's participating. Would you all just stand for a moment, just so we can see? There's some VPs here, there's some staff people, all of you that had to do with this venture, just stand up. So thank you. Vice President Hagan, VP of Student Affairs, was responsible for the overall guidance of this project. There was a lot of high-level executive staff involvement. Bill Mulaney, our academic VP, was deeply involved. Victor Anaya, Executive Director of Finance, as well. So I really appreciate the effort. Now, to show you a glimpse of what this new system does, and how it's different from what we've been doing in the past, and how we think it will make a difference in the lives of our students, I'm going to ask two people to come forward who've been deeply involved in the project. Jennifer Reyes, our Dean of Counseling, and Diana O'Connor, who heads up our advising and career services area. So folks, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Jennifer Reyes, I'm the Dean of Student Support Services. And today, Dr. O'Connor and I will be showing you some aspects of Alucion self-service, specifically student planning, financial services, and financial aid. So five ways that self-service will impact BCC overall is it provides a central location for all student accounts, encourages degree planning, simplifies class scheduling, and improves communication. What we're going to get into is, or at least my piece, after Diana speaks about advising, is streamlining financial services and financial aid, which is a huge piece to completion and success for students. I'll turn it over to Diana.
So when students log in to their self-service accounts, this is what they see right now. It puts all of their accounts together in one place. These modules are the student finance, student planning, financial aid, and grades. We also have enrollment verification, graduation for students that have enough credits, tax information, and bank information will be coming soon. What's great about this is any notification that a student gets, it appears right here. So as we're working with students in the advising center, if they got a notification from financial aid, or from the bursar, or from one of the other areas, we see it as well, and we can really speak to the student and walk them through the process, explain to them, because a lot of times they're not really sure what it means, direct them to the services that they need. But when they go in to look for anything, all of their information will be there. We work with students all the time, and one of the biggest problems we have is they don't check their email. So we'll see students that have over 1,000 unread emails, a lot of them may be important related to this. This will help solve that problem. For advisors, one of the features that we really love is the timeline. The timeline allows us to populate a student's educational plan for multiple semesters. We can do it automatically, where it's directly as the catalog lays out the information, or we can manually input the courses. This lets the students see all of the classes that they have to take. It will show their grades, their number of credits, they can add terms, they can remove courses. What we saw in the fall, when we first started working with student planning, is how this changed the whole advising conversation. Previously, when we had worked with students, we'd show them the catalog, we'd show them the Web Advisor, we'd go through the list. This really put it in a visual way that they could understand, and they started to engage in the conversation a little bit more. Maybe I want to graduate a little earlier, how could I do that? I can't take that many credits in one semester, how can I map that out to add terms in? So for students, it really engaged them in the process a little more, and this information stays there so that as we progress through semester after semester, they'll be able to go back and look to see what classes they have to take. If any of you have ever helped a student try to register for classes, you know when Web Advisor, it was tedious. You had to scroll through, click. It was very, very difficult. Again, what's great about the Alucion is it's very visual. So this right here is a student who's in progress mapping out their classes. They're able to register with the click of a button, and they can plan the courses to see how the other classes will fit around it, to really help them create their schedule in a way that they know exactly what they're taking and how it fits with their lives. This system is color-coded, so as classes close, or if they're wait-listed, those indications will show there as well. And if there's prerequisites they have to take, it's clearly visible for the students in a way that we didn't have before with Web Advisor. At the top left of the screen, you may see the arrows up there. Students can move between semesters, so all of the classes that we just had mapped out in the timeline, they can progress through. So there's no surprise for them as to what classes they're going to take every semester. They can really see the courses. And the advising notes, the student notes, this is something that as advisors we love. As we work with the student, we can type up a summary of the notes, put some reminders in there. This way, the students can go back and refer to the notes, they can see who they spoke with, if they want to go back and talk to the same person. The student can add a note in there and send it, and the advisors will get it. So it really increases the communication in a way that we haven't been able to do before.
So our number one priority is completion and retention. Finances gets in the way for our students. They don't always understand how much college costs, and this system really lays everything out, and it lays everything out in a visual way. So students are able to see things in real time, which before they were not able to. So at any time, they can just click in and they can see what their status is. So here, our financial services is the bursar's office. So payments, how much do I have to pay? And there's four different areas that are key here on these pages for financial services. First, they're able to view account activity. So what is their current payment? What financial aid have they received? What refunds have they received? And what is their balance? A lot of times, students, if you've worked in Web Advisor, you're clicking in and out, you have to put in the term, you have to hope that you've clicked the right term, and then, you know, to go to financial aid is another area. So this is all on one page, which is a wonderful, it's a wonderful visual, too. Below, you can click down, and it details in to those, to the accounts. The next thing that's, I think it's a big improvement, is viewing the statement and also being able to print it. So with this, this is a, this is a big deal. We always talk about how much credits are, how much fees are. Students are actually going to get to see what classes they're taking and how much that class costs, that class. How much fees that class costs. So it has that breakdown, which is different, and it shows the student not only the timeline of how long it's going to take, but also how much it's going to cost. The next thing is, most important, is making a payment. How do I make a payment? And the payment plan. So all of those resources are on there. And one of the great things that I like on here, and I worked with a student today, who I had him, I said, "Oh, login," and I was kind of doing things around my office, and he immediately went into Web Advisor, said, "No, no, no, we're going to go into self-service." And we had to go into financial aid first, he had financial services, he had a hold, so we had to discuss that. But one of the things that I loved on this page was it had a link right to the FAFSA application. That's not, that's not only in the bursar area, but is also in financial aid, where before, he's like, "I don't know where to go, I don't know what room to go into." So he was, he was really happy about that. Okay, so next is financial aid. I think one of the things that I would, several years ago, I got to have the honor of running financial aid for a whole three, I want to say it was like three or four months. It was probably the toughest three or four months that I've had here at the college, because I didn't know it. It was like that, that black hole of, I don't know what goes on in there, but there's a long line, and no one seems happy in there. But it wasn't actually that. You know, when you go in there, the staff in there, they know so much, and I learned so much. When I got to see these pages, this is kind of how they taught me. They made it very visual for me, so that I could understand it. And now, a student will be able to understand it. So what are some of the things in financial aid? What are students interested in? How much money did I get? Right? Can I pay for my bill? Understanding your status. Do I still need to bring in documents? What documents? What are those? Did I even fill out my FAFSA? What's my, what's my status, you know, educationally? Right? So it tells them all of that. Just detailing into that, the financial aid service menu. Students will get to point out in real time, again, in a clear breakdown on what's going on in financial aid. So they get to see what's the award year. They can go into 1718 to see that, what they got, to see if they have extra money for the summertime. Can I take a summer class? So this, this week, actually last week, we started advising and registering for summer classes. Do I have the money for that? And it was easy to go in to see, do you have leftover money? They get to print and access their award letter, which was kind of cumbersome in Web Advisor, quite frankly. It's so easy here, just to click in and pull it. It's a really, it's attractive document as well. That green box up there, they get to see what their satisfactory academic progress is. So for those of you who don't know what SAP is, it's a word we're all afraid of in advising and counseling and financial aid. We don't want students to be on SAP. And what that means is that if they have too many classes that they have withdrawn from, or that they failed, they are in jeopardy of losing their financial aid. So this tells them, look at that box, that's what you see up there. Right? You see that clear as day. This is saying that they're in good progress. I did have a student today that it was nice and bright orange-yellow, and I was like, "Ooh, this is not good." So I was able to explain to him, if you withdraw from this class today, he wanted to withdraw from one of his classes, this is not going to be good for you in the fall. Let's talk about tutoring. How can we get through this? Let's talk to the, so this also becomes an advising in a counseling page, in addition to finances. You get to view missing documents, also very important. So students get these emails. If you've ever worked with a student before, and advisors, counselors in the, in the audience will know, we open up their portal, and there's like 17,555 unread emails. And somewhere in there is a financial aid letter, and we just, forget it, you know, we're just, let's just talk about this. Let's contact, and there's, the staff and financial aid are so great, you know, usually just, "Janet, Ayesha, can you help me? What do they need?" No, we don't have to do that. And not that they weren't helpful, but it, it saves time, personnel time, it saves paper. It tells the student right away, and the counselor, what documents do you need? Did you not fill out your counseling, your master, master promissory note? What's missing? So it gives a list of that. This person is in great, we picked a really good student here. They got it all together. And this is what we want. So some other things are a checklist of required items, so take action. You know, this is due, that's due, you haven't done this. So even when the student has done everything, then it puts the onus on the financial aid office, which is great, right? It puts us in check. It says, okay, we have to get to this student, or they're going to be on us. So it tells us that as well. They also can check their federal Pell grant. So I know this is hard to see, and it's even hard to see a little bit on the PowerPoint, but there's a percentage there. And students can have only so much Pell money. So Pell is a grant, that's money that is free from the government, from the federal government. Students don't have to pay it back. Right? But they have to do well. They have to earn a certain GPA to keep that money. We want them to continue, and they have to make progress with this. So they have, they only are allowed 12 full-time semesters with Pell, or 600%. So they'll see that number, and that's all spelled out there for them, so easy. I remember when I was learning this, Ayesha taught me, God bless her, I don't think she's here, but she taught me this, and it was, I didn't know what she was saying, if I only had this to teach me that. Access to helpful links, again. So FAFSA application is the biggest thing. If you've worked with students before, you know that there's scam websites, and that was something that our students would fall prey to. That's no more, no more. Student loans, deadline dates, IRS, huge, huge things, most important. Nellnet, that's our make a payment. So accept or rejecting awards, they can do that. I think I should move ahead a little bit, there you go. Also requesting loan changes. So once you've requested a loan, maybe you don't need all of that money, because we don't want to encourage debt. Right? We don't, we don't want to do that. So if a student maybe is at the end of their time here, they're graduating, they don't need that much money, they don't need a summer, a summer class, we can lessen that loan. And finally, is the contact information for financial aid. And, oop, too much, which is important, the telephone and email. So it really, it gives the student total access, but I have to say, after all of the information that is on here, it really speaks to students. It's not our language, it's their language, which is most important. I would just like to say, for financial aid, this is, it's simplified, financial aid. It's not scary, it's not overwhelming, and it really puts the student's money, their money, it's not our money, their money, in their hands to use it correctly.
And then, one of the things that we're most excited about is, coming soon, we hope by the end of the term, we'll have an app for this. It'll allow students access, students and staff, everyone, access to their accounts, really putting it in their hands. And again, we do hope that with having the app and the notifications sent there, they'll respond a lot quicker than they have with emails. If they get something from the registrar's office, or the bursar's office, it'll ping right away, and they'll be able to see it. One of the problems that we have in advising, that Jen mentioned again, is just the emails that they get. They don't sit and go through them. So this will really target all the important information that we want our students to have, which we hope will prompt a response. We used student planning last semester in the advising center. We started a little earlier, and resoundingly, the response was positive. Students really liked it, they understood it, they found it easy to register for their classes, they talked about how long, how, how many problems they encountered when they tried to register for it. So we're excited now to go through this next term, having all the other modules accessible to us. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you can see that people are excited about the project. There's a comment or a question from the board?
I have questions. So, I mean, I saw your reactions from 2018, and this went live April 1st. I know it's just a few weeks, but what has been the reaction from students so far?
I'd say students have really embraced it. They're, they find it easy, they love the advising notes that we can put things in, and they can refer back to, and they know who they spoke to. And really, just the scheduling part has made a big impact on them. We do hope that as, as more students get on it and see it, that, you know, everyone will move towards it a lot quicker, and cut down the lines. Students should be able to do a lot without having to stand on line. And the planning, for us in the advising center, students just didn't understand the degree. They didn't understand the semester-to-semester sequence. I would ask a lot of them, when are you going to graduate? And they really had no idea, because they hadn't mapped out all of their courses. Having that timeline, being able to really see and plan through it, is something they like.
So the system has already mapped this out for every student who is in the system?
Not yet. We have that capability. It is possible to automatically upload it, so all the plans are there. That's something that's in discussion, whether we're going to do that for all students. Automatically populating the timeline works best for the new students, because the, yeah. But it is something that we're looking at and considering.
Okay. And I have another follow-up question. I saw, it was my question, I saw the phone app, which is due. So right now, what does it look like on the student end of the mobile screens?
Those are student screens. All the-
No, no, student end of mobile screens. I know in the app, it will be designed for app-friendly, but the reality is, students do use their mobiles for most of their work, even if it is not friendly. So I just want to know if you have any feedback from that, you have an experience of what it looks like?
Those pictures were all taken from an iPad.
Okay.
So it does look like that, even on the iPads.
That's not bad at all.
No, not bad at all.
Not bad at all.
If I could add there, the underlying technology is, is an adaptive design, so regardless of the device that you're using, it, the screen re-formats for that device.
And I have one more question. Sorry, I-
No, that's okay, that's great.
So, and also, you mentioned somewhere that they can look at what their bill is. Are they able to pay it online, using a credit, debit card, payment plan, right there?
Very easily.
So it's like a one-step process, if somebody's ready to pay their money?
Yes, very, very easily.
Great, can't ask for more besides the phone app, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I can sympathize. I've done the programming for 30 years in New York for high school, done the college piece for them as well, failed miserably with my own son this year. He does not check his emails. I want to choke him. I just sent him a text, I said, "Check your emails," I swear to God. And this makes it so easy, because we forget that at 17, 18, 19 years old, they're still kids, and they're still, you know, big bodies, and their head is thinking on what I'm going to do this weekend- and their head is thinking on what I'm going to do this weekend, and forget the bills and everything else. I love how simplified it is. I love the fact that you can, you know, literally pick apart what it is that you need to do to continue, both on the academic front and financial aid side, which is the toughest part to navigate. If we can lighten up the lines downstairs and the phone calls, because I've called for my son, the University of Pittsburgh, at least ten times now, and they already know, I guess, when my number comes up on their end, that I'm asking a question. It's a difficult system on their end to do. So I don't, you know, I give you credit, and I look forward to having the kids using this. I think it's going to be wonderful going forward. Thank you for the presentation.
What's great for us, too, is last semester, you know, we have a lot of students who delay their registration, but as advisors, we can go in and kind of map classes out, give them some suggestions, and students will get the prompt then on their phone that, you know, here's a plan for them to register, to kind of help guide them through.
That's awesome.
The only comment I'd like to make is I wish this was in place when I was a student year, because I spent many hours in one of those lines that you talked about.
Yes.
Well done. Thank you.
This is actually part of our program to improve retention. One of our big problems, attrition rates, especially from the fall to spring semester. And we think by letting students, two things, see the total timeline of their courses over multiple semesters will help them commit more to the institution. The second thing is, before, we really didn't have an advising system. We had people who did advising and worked hard at it, but our registration system didn't have an advising component. So although our faculty are willing to participate in the advising system, there was nothing for them to do for most of the semester, because that wasn't during a registration period. With this system, students can come in, meet with an advisor outside of a registration period, map out their program, so that when they get to a registration period, it's easier for them to then register. Now, we're finding that this is changing the conversation that we have with faculty about the nature of advising. Each month, I meet with the faculty senate officers, and we often talk about all kinds of things, sometimes tedious things, that's just part of the business. But one of the nice things we've been able to do recently is begin to talk about how this system changes the way we think of advising, and how we'll begin to involve faculty in deeper, more meaningful ways of advising.
One more question, if I can ask. Does this system have ability for parents? I know FARPA and all those guidelines, but is there some kind of access for parents? Especially given the ones who don't want to pay the bills and want to reach out to...
Right. They have to access it through their portal still. So it's not, it's not separate. So just as they would go and find their classes in Moodle, they'd have to go into their portal, which I guess if parents, if the username and password were shared...
Oh, the username and... No, like, I know that in some institutions, they have a separate access for parents for certain parts, especially as they relate to finances. I was just curious.
That's a good question.
It is a good question.
I'm unsure of the answer.
One thing was, when classes are filled, does it then just delete them? And then you don't have to...
Right. One of the filters on the student screen, they can filter the information, and one of the options is to show only open classes. But it's also evident, based on the color, it changes. And it says in text that the class is closed, but the box also goes to red. So that it does give the indication that students see.
Because I think, I think that most of us on this table, except for Peter and Irene, we went to school, I had those big green and white papers with the... And they just kept, you know, scratching them off, and then you knew what was left was, you know, the history of the Soviet Union, which I took in the morning, because I saw that was left. But, so this is real time. If it drops, it's there.
Yes, yes.
That's, God bless.
It's a great step for the board for the college.
I'm sorry, Patrick. I didn't mean to...
What we saw last term was, when we had web advisors, students would scroll through the list and see all the closed classes. But when we were doing it, and they saw all the boxes that were closed, the latecomers kind of realized how many sections they missed, how much opportunity passed them by by registering so late. So we're hoping, as they see it, it may prompt them to come in a little earlier and plan, register their classes.
One hundred percent.
So, if I may, one of the wonderful things about having a Lucian on campus now is that I was just informed that we do have the access, we just have to turn it on, apparently, for parents to access. Thank you, Lucian.
Very good.
I noticed that you have a link to FAFSA. What about a link to NJFAM? And when it shows that you're missing documents, does it show that you're missing documents for NJFAM, which your students have to know to go to that website as well?
I don't know that answer. Do we have somebody from financial aid here, or no?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't see it here. Yeah, because that's a big obstacle for...
If you come up with other good ideas or questions, make sure you let us know. We'll inventory them and make sure we get to them. Thank you.
If I could just quickly, I just wanted to thank, thank the board for letting us present. I also wanted to thank Diana O'Connor, but also the leadership that we have here. The VPs have been very supportive, Dr. Hagan and Dr. Malaney, and my colleagues in registration and admissions, so.
Thank you.
We have a couple of short but important presentations, and I'm going to ask Dr. Malaney to take the lead.
Thank you, Dr. Redmond. Chairperson, owners, members of the board. We do have a couple of recognitions tonight that are truly noteworthy, and I'm very proud to be speaking about these couple folks tonight. The first is a student of ours named Elda Paray. Elda, want to come up here for a second? So Elda collects accolades like other people collect stamps, okay? So I just want to share with you a little bit about what she's been up to these past couple months. Elda is a 2017 Coca-Cola Leader of Promise, Coca-Cola Silver Scholar, which we just found out about, and she currently serves, she just finished her term as the PTK New Jersey State President. She's a STEM student, and she's working on a project called Enable, which is developing prosthetic hands for disabled students using a 3D printer. My plan tonight was to surprise Elda with some really big news, but the foundation that delivers the news beat me to it. So we surprised her in class on, yesterday, letting her know that she is a recipient of this year's Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship. Now, for those who don't, who aren't familiar with the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship, this means that she has forty thousand dollars available to her for the next two years to finish her education, plus additional seventy-five thousand dollars to complete her graduate studies. So this is life-changing money. So only forty, forty-nine, no, forty-seven students in the whole country are awarded this, so it's truly a special one. So can we give her another round of applause? And finally, I want you to hear from Elda tonight. Elda was also selected as one of eight Dream Scholars by achieving the Dream for this year's conference. So she came with the Bergen contingent to Nashville to the Dream 2018 Conference, in which she and seven other students from around the country were able to participate not only in sessions, but also conducted a panel in which they were asked to share their views on student success and other things colleges are doing with three thousand people in the audience. One of the things they were also asked to do was to write a poem introducing themselves to those three thousand people. And Elda's poem was very powerful and well-received, and I asked her if she would be willing to share it with the board tonight. So I'm going to pass it over to Elda.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I just wanted to say that I am so glad that Bergen employees and staff get to attend conferences like the Dream Conference, because I think that, just like people have a comfort zone, so do institutions. But conferences like that help us go out of that comfort bubble. So thank you. Here goes. I am from a country where women cannot lead. I am from a country where women cannot science. I am from a country where women do not say no. I am from a country where this woman said no. I am from my father's frowns and rails when I first thought I would pursue writing. I am from the feelings of every character in my completed novels, from Justin Dorm, who changed souls every time he woke up, from Albert Einstein, who searched for him to prove that reality does not exist, from Homunculus, the AI robot that told them the truth, the truth that they were all words on this nineteen-year-old's piece of paper. I am from my mother's doubt after telling her that I would be a leader in Phi Theta Kappa. And I am from the words of that girl in my election who told me, "You inspired me." From the International Honor Society that fuels that inspiration. From every captain that voted for me as New Jersey President. From the scholarship, leadership, service, and fellowship that will be part of me long after I complete my degrees. I am from my aunt, who called me a hypocrite and self-absorbed, who doesn't believe that I get stuck studying in the library evenings. I am from the email I got back from Jack Kent Cooke saying I was a semifinalist. From the 4.0 that I have known and loved my whole academic career. From all the opportunities that Bergen Community College has offered. From the STEM department, tutoring center, and great professors' advice that will hopefully get me, well, that got me to Jack Kent Cooke's 120 grand scholarship. I am from the skepticism of my friends when I started developing a new math. I am from the journal where my math paper was first published. From the signs and cosines that we know and love. From Fibonacci, who gave me his spiral to work with. From the notebook where my very own spiral trigonometry was born, which I named Trigonachi, and like a mother, I have nurtured ever since. I am from the words fraud, selfish, illogical, and daydreamer. And I am from the scholarships, the research, the aid projects, the tutoring, and the networks. I am from prejudice, racism, mistrust, disappointment. But also admiration, inspiration, success, happiness. I am from them all. I am from Newton, from Gauss, from Einstein. I am from Dr. Faust, King Lear, and Mrs. Helmer. I am from every genius and every idler that came before me. I am from every novel page, every integral, every painting in vector. But most importantly, I am from the pale blue dot where anything is possible. I am from the oldest caves from the youngest buildings. I am from generations and generations and generations of one race, from every dust of every star of every galaxy. I am from where you are from. I am from the universe, where a woman, this woman, says yes. Thank you.
And just as a nice footnote, Elda has been accepted to Cal Poly, and now I think she has the money to go there. So that's great.
That's great.
Our second recognition tonight, the, every year the college awards the John and Sue Ann Roush Excellence Award, which is hosted, sponsored by the League for Innovation in the Community Colleges. We accept nominations and self-nominations from everyone at the college. And this year's recipient was Dr. Camilla Manuela Latiano. I wonder if she can join me up here. Manuela was recognized for her transformative work with the Model UN Club. After months of preparation, over four hundred colleges and universities from almost one hundred and thirty UN member countries and forty US states meet every April at the International Conference in New York, engaging six thousand students and four hundred and fifty professors in a week of debate on global problems. At the conference, while getting involved in committee sessions and hallway caucuses to defend their assigned country positions, students develop an appreciation of differing viewpoints, experience the challenges of negotiation, see the rewards of cooperation, broaden their worldview, and discover the human side of international relations. This hands-on cooperative learning experience helps students get civically engaged, become better global citizens, and become creative in looking for peaceful solutions for conflicts. In 2017, the International Conference celebrated ninety years in existence. Even though the BCC delegation is rather young and inexperienced, and they were competing against mostly four-year schools, they were awarded, let me get these right, let me get these awards right. Okay. In 2016, they were awarded an Honorable Delegation Award. In 2017, they won the highest prizes granted at the conference, the Outstanding Delegation Award and the Outstanding Position Paper Award. And this year, they brought home, they continued the hat-trick, I'd say, and got the, once again, the Honorable Delegation Award. Can we give a round of applause for that, please? Thank you. When, no, no, don't go anywhere yet. Okay. When, when I let Manuela know that she, that she won the award, she sent me a brief email back, and I just would like to read a brief excerpt of that. "Hi, Bill. Thank you so much. Actually, my students deserve this award much more than me. I feel honored and privileged to work at BCC. The award obliges me to keep the standards high and continue advising the club, striving for providing my students with meaningful learning experiences." I think that tells you a lot about her humility and her dedication to the college. So once again, Camilla, congratulations. Thank you.
Again, I just want to say that this is the word of my students, it's not of me. Thank you.
And for our final recognition tonight, I'd like to introduce Dr. Victor Brown, Dean of Business Arts and Social Sciences Division. Dr. Brown.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Professor Benjamin. Madam Chairperson, Board of Trustees, I would like to present to you Bishop Alejandro Benjamin, who is a tenure professor of sociology here at Bergen Community College, where he has served for more than thirty years. He is an evangelical bishop and senior pastor of Rock of Salvation Church in Patterson, New Jersey, where he is consummately highly respected and well-known community leader and prolific author with expertise in graduate-level social work, education, research, community, university, capacity-building partnerships, political advocacy, organized and faith-based institution. Bishop Benjamin is originally from Baranoha and...
Baraona.
Baraona, an old poverty-stricken town in the southwestern section of the Dominican Republic. There, he developed a close working relationship with the Haitian community. He came to the US to reside in New Jersey in 1970. He has resided in Patterson, New Jersey, where he settled with his family. On February 11th, 2018, Bishop Benjamin was installed by Senator Bob Menendez as the tenth president of the Dominican-American National Roundtable, where he is one of the most influential Dominican in the United States. The Dominican-American National Roundtable represents 2.5 million Dominicans across the United States of America. As he prepares to retire from Bergen Community College, we lift our hats to him and to say, "Thank you for your job. Well done, Professor Benjamin."
Thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure, and it's a very dangerous thing to give a microphone to a preacher. However, I have mixed feelings in terms of going to perform my next level of life, to become the president of the Dominican-American National Roundtable, a thirty-two-thousand-member institution, representing 1.5 million Dominicans in the United States. As I leave Bergen, I have a mixed feeling. I started an EOF counselor. I went on to the admissions counselor. Then I went on to become a counselor in the Counseling Center, and I end up teaching in the Social Science Department. Those of you who saw me in the hallways always have this question when I speak Spanish to my Spanish people. They tell me with very question mark in their forehead, "But you speak Spanish?" And I say, "Yes." "But, but I thought you were black." And I say, "Yes." Therefore, Bergen has been a great place to be. I am going to continue to have a working relationship with Bergen, and I hope in my new endeavors, I will be carrying that, all the experiences and good things that Bergen provided me in my tenure here. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That concludes my rather long president's report, but hey, we have a lot to be proud of.
Certainly do. Onto committees. Audit, Finance, and Legal Affairs. Patrick, would you like to?
I was not at the meeting.
Oh, you weren't at the meeting either. Mark?
I will.
Oh, Jim?
I did. You want to do it?
No.
No, no, you go ahead. Which one?
This Audit and Finance items 1 through 13 for approval by the trustees.
Thank you. Education and Student Affairs, Chantal, in place of Joe, because Joe was not there.
Hold on, I have to say.
There are two items.
Yeah, those two items we reviewed, they're all in line, so we request for approval.
Thank you. Personnel, Jim.
I move the approval of items 1 through 13 on the personnel agenda. I understand on A1, there is a desire to have an executive session, and at the appropriate time, Madam Chairman, you so direct the trustees to go.
Right.
The next one is site and facilities. Madam Chairman?
Yes. Oh, you got that, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'd like to move SF 1 through 4 for the approval of the trustees this evening. That's SF 1 through 4.
And Strategic Planning and Issues.
Excuse me?
No, next. You're done.
Oh.
Strategic planning did not meet in March, because you are one of our many nor'easters, so we'll meet tomorrow. That's true. Alumni trustee, Peter.
Yeah, I just want to give like a recognition and a shout-out for someone that is being worked on that I didn't have anything really to do with, but when I talked with the student government president, her and the faculty met and are implementing a policy where if students have three exams that fall in within the single day of their test-taking during like finals and midterms, they'll have now like the right petition and move at least one of those exams within that same day, so they'll only be stressed and have to study two of them, which is great, because I know at my school, they currently do that, from what I've heard at Moncler, they do that as well, so it's good that we now kind of have that as well to kind of protect and make sure students do well in courses, that, you know, Student Government Day, which was amazing, like that was one of the best things I've seen them do here so far. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Peter. Okay. My report on ACCT, I'm going to talk about that for just a minute. Monthly, the people on policy and have a monthly phone call where we get on it and talk about things that have bothered us. Now, you heard Chantal talk at the last meeting, where the three of us, Gerard, Chantal, and I, were at the ACCT, and we went to visit all our legislators to ask them to please keep our funding. We need it. We can't have the surplus of Pell Grant being removed, and a whole bunch of things. The only thing they didn't get to this month was the Prosper Act, which will talk about sharing, taking the money away. If students don't complete their time and they've had money given to them, the college has to pay it back. So that's why we want everybody here. So now, I just want to give you a little brief thing on this. The Pell Grants have been increased by $175 for each semester, I believe it's for the upcoming year. Surplus will not be touched. Federal Work Study is getting $140 million increase. The FSEOG is receiving $107 million. Perkins is getting $75 million. And Adult Ed, which I wanted to take away also, is getting $35 million. Childcare is getting $35 million to help students going to college. So these are really good things, and I want to thank you guys for being there with me and for all of us fighting together.
I have a question there.
Sure.
Are these amounts in addition to what's already been there, or these?
Yes, because the $140 million will bring up the total funding for Federal Work Study to 1.130 billion.
So they've increased everything? The numbers you mentioned are an increase over previous years?
Yes. And next time, we hope to hear what's going to happen with the Sharing Act. I, you know, hope it disappears, but, you know. Anyhow, that's my update right now, okay? So we'll go on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business, board members? Nobody? Okay. Okay. Any new business? Nobody has new business either. Let's see. Open to the public.
I'm Alan Kaufman. I'm a professor of English at the college and am the chair of the Faculty Senate. I'm looking at action number SF 1, which is about renovations to rooms S 132, 134, and 138. This has been something that's been talked about for quite a while, and I'm just wondering if there are diagrams available for the faculty to see. And I'm wondering, secondly, how much input was there from the faculty on the decisions about the renovations and restructuring of these rooms, specifically biology faculty who teach so many of their courses in these rooms?
Yeah, let me respond to that. The diagrams are available. There was actually a lot of discussion. As you know, this was an issue that had been dragging on here at the college for some time last year. So what we did was convene a meeting of the faculty who were interested, and we hammered out an agreement as a result of that, and the plans that have been improved in this particular resolution reflect that agreement. Good, thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
Any other new business?
Good evening. My name is Luis de Abreu. I am the Stomatics Program Director here at Bergen. I just want to take this opportunity as a reminder, on top of all the other events that Dr. Redmond mentioned, we also have the STEM Conference happening on Friday.
Sorry, I forgot.
In fact, it's all right. In fact, students like Elda will be presenting that day. They'll be presenting all the projects, the research projects that they're working on. I just finished, with the amazing help of the PR Department, finalizing the program, so we have everything ready. I'll be sharing this, hopefully, with entire BCC community as an invitation for everyone to attend the event. It is a highly attended event. It is well-recognized, so it is only fair that we also have our own people attending and supporting the STEM program, or the STEM students mainly. We have a few very interesting sessions happening in the afternoon as well, so it goes as a concurrent session, high-impact session, workshop presentation type of style. That will be at 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon. At 3:00, we will announce the winners of the poster competition. That will be in the morning, and I will break this, everything in the email, and also I'll attach the program. So it is a whole-day event. We start at 7:00 PM, I mean, 7:00 AM during the setup, but the actual presentations and introductions and welcome remarks begin at 8:30 AM. We have a keynote speaker from IBM. He's a distinguished engineer. He's also the Chief Technology Officer at IBM. He'll be our keynote speaker, talking at 9:00. Hopefully, you guys can join us for that as well. You know, it's a nice way to say thank you for their participation. We have a couple of sponsors, corporate partners, that have dedicated some money towards the talent of our students, and that's a great opportunity also for us to thank them. So once again, if you guys can join us, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Question. Would the students from Applied Technology be part of this?
We have two groups of students from the Applied Tech High School competing at the poster session. Alongside college students is an even playing field, and you will be surprised at the quality of project the high schools are bringing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to invite the board members, if they'd like, mock trials, holding an in-house competition. It's our fourth annual one at Lynnhurst. The students put it together from both campuses. We have Colonel Justice majors, members of the SGA that put it together. I just kind of stand back in the shadows, so if you'd like to come and watch or even participate as a juror who gets to judge the competition, I welcome you guys to do so. It's April 24, between 12:00 and 2:00. A flyer will be sent out, looking for individuals to either participate or attend. Thank you.
I may have forgotten to say that on Thursday at 11:00 is the kickoff event of Asian Heritage Celebration, and the speaker is the Attorney General of New Jersey, and so we're looking forward to that, and you certainly are invited.
Anything else coming up? I don't think I have time to sleep this month, at all. I don't know about the rest of you. If there's no other people coming up to speak, we'll go on to actions. Approval of minutes first, March 6, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who carries? Consent agenda with the exception of P 1A and P 1B. Big, P 1B.
Just P 1A.
Just P 1A, right, okay.
There are two documents for it.
Right, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Chairwoman, just for me, I'm chairing myself, A F 1, only A F 1.
And Mark with A F 1, okay. You did write that down, right? Okay. All right. May I have a motion for the consent agenda then?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a roll call on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Joseph A. Barretto?
Yes.
Dorothy Blakesley is absent. Gerard Carroll?
Yes.
James Demetracus?
Yes.
Patrick Fletcher?
Yes.
Mark Longo?
Yes.
Carol Otis?
Yes.
Irene Ujo?
Yes.
Chantal Rangin?
Yes.
Peter Zalacostas?
Yes.
And Joseph Zara is absent. Okay. We all now have the adjournments. Do you have any people today?
Yes.
Okay. On behalf of Chairperson Otis pursuant to Section 12B of the Open Public Meanings Act, NJSA 10-4-6 et cetera, the following matters will be discussed by the board in a closed session tonight, which are personnel matters. The discussion will become public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Thank you. At this time, I'd like a motion. Chantal, would you please make a motion to go into a second?
Done? Thank you.
Joseph A. Barretto?
Yes.
Dorothy Blakesley is absent. Gerard Carroll?
Yes.
James Demetracus?
Yes.
Patrick Fletcher?
Yes.
Mark Longo?
Yes.
Carol Otis?
Yes.
Irene Ujo?
Yes.
Chantal Rangin?
Yes.
Peter Zalacostas?
Yes.
And Mr. Zara is absent.
Did you vote? No, we didn't vote yet. You should take a roll call on that.
Yes, of course, Chairperson. Joseph A. Barretto?
Yes.
Dorothy is absent. Gerard Carroll?
Yes.
James Demetracus?
Here.
Patrick Fletcher?
Yes.
Mark Longo?
Yes.
Carol Otis?
Yes.
Irene Ujo?
Chair.
Chantal Rangin?
Yes.
Peter Zalacostas?
Yes.
And Mr. Zara is absent. May I have a motion on the resolution, P 1A?
On the consent agenda now?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make the motion that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
No, no, no.
He did that one.
Just P 1A.
That I think was done.
Just the one.
I'm sorry.
P 1A.
Pat, you.
You go right ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, please. I'm screwing up here.
Move P 1A.
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes. Joseph A. Barretto?
Yes.
Dorothy is absent. Gerard Carroll?
Yes.
James Demetracus?
Yes.
Patrick Fletcher?
Yes.
Mark Longo?
Yes.
Carol Otis?
Yes.
Irene Ujo?
Yes.
Chantal Rangin?
No.
Peter Zalacostas?
Yes.
And Mr. Zara is absent. Motion has carried, and now it's.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn now.
You go. I want to go home, too.
Don't fight over it. Who did the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.